Alright, so we're gonna start with germination. Okay, so develop a hypothesis predictions for the effect of salinity on crop germination. I think I remember doing one. It was like during um the class session, I think it's up. Like it was like end of September. Yeah, for that packet. So it's pretty much the higher the concentration. I think we can answer this allocation as well, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like the higher the salinity.
Right?
Results in the lowered seed germination or crop germination.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Are you going to be sharing the document?
Yes, I will as well. I can share it to you, actually. I totally forgot there.
I was thinking about working alongside you.
Yeah, that's what I'd be there, sorry. Okay, I shared it to you. You should be able to find on your drive, Christina.
Got it?
Yes.
Right.
So yeah, the higher the salinity. Yields lower crop germination rates. And then I'll do a prediction similar. So if there is higher salinity. In the crops. Then. What yield? Lower germination rates. We'll stay here for an hour and then, or even less. It'll be quick, I'm sure.
Yeah. I guess I can take over the next point, so.
Yeah, it's like oh, zero percent, one percent, ten percent, if I remember correctly.
Yes. I'm just gonna write it in step because it's easier that way.
Yeah, it's a lot of information. Put it in. Steps there.
Seeds, so. Sample where I.
Yeah, rye. Weeds, I think.
For example, if you have fifteen seeds. Zero percent in A C L, then the others should. Hi guys, I'm in the Thursday lab. What are you guys working on?
We're just doing the study guide right now. I can show you the link. Let me see, we posted right now. Let me see. I'll put on the chat for you. Here you go.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Let me re-edit, so I'll allow you to edit as well. Let's see. But yeah, honestly, so we're just gonna be doing the, you know, learning outcomes from those those sections from germination to hormones. And then we'll just fill it out. Yeah, it'll be a quick one. We'll be in and out. Alrighty. So yeah, feel free to start anywhere. It's cool. Right, so apply conclusions from the experimental results. Let's see. This is pretty much what we got, right? So it confirmed that the ten percent. Yielded zero seeds germinated. Seeds germinated. And then the one percent yielded probably five or six seeds. Germinated. And the zero percent salinity yielded like nine or ten. Awesome, awesome. Okay.
Another conclusion is that the germination for each of these salinity depends on the species. Some of them might actually do better than others.
That's true. That's true. Alrighty, thank you. Yeah, that's good. Oh, let me take this one out. This is the same one as the allocation from the looks of it. Let me see, science. Plasticity, okay, where the shoot ratios, total hypothesis and predictions. Okay, let me take these out. These are duplicates. See. Sun experiment, let me see. Yeah, this is supposed to be in the allocation.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw on the germination and allocation section. Let's see. But yeah, we might as well just put it so it won't conflict.
Yeah, that's fine.
Awesome, awesome. Let's see. Okay, I think that's good. Alright, so let's go to photosynthesis and leaves. This this looks like it checks out. I don't see the practical being that complex. Okay, so photosynthesis and leaves. So describe the gases produced consumed by leaves in the light and dark.
Okay, the light, we are producing oxygen.
True, true. I think this is like the, what is that, photosynthesis reaction and the Calvin cycle. That's how I think. Let me move that there. See. The photosynthesis produces glucose, if I remember from bio one. Okay.
Well, we're talking about gases here.
Oh, yeah, true. O two is, it's O two rather, might be. Let's see. And it's vice versa, yeah. Should I put the formula as well? Just as a reference.
We can put it above here.
True, true. Let me, let me just copy paste it from my other study guide there.
I know on the quiz you like through the glucose question and stuff like that, but this learning outcome is asking for gases. I don't know, we should add it.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to have it. I mean, we could just say like, oh, glucose is also produced. Unfortunately, for the exam, it's, we can't use, it's not open note, but it would be a good, it's like, it would be good just to remember, like, oh. It reproduces this.
Yeah, I just wanna write and like remind people.
Exactly, it doesn't.
Before they take it.
Yeah.
So they're gonna use this to go over it and then.
Exactly. And I also have the recording, so I'll make sure to upload on YouTube. It's easier for me to share it. And then, yeah. That should be also helpful.
Is this correct? Calvin cycle also produces ATP.
Let me double check. I'm very sure you're right, though. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, produces ATP and ADP H in the first stage of the Calvin cycle. Yeah, I might be. Let's see. And for did, I wanna add this as well, pyruvates.
Oh, you might wanna read. You wanna add to the note as well that in the photosynthesis, you also need water. And you gotta need some light. She might ask you about reactants and products, so even though we got the gases down, we might wanna mention other stuff.
That's true. We should keep a note of that.
Cause she threw that question at us before.
I see, I see.
Are you still inserting the equation or?
Sorry, I got it. I'm getting it from our exam too.
Oh, okay.
From plant bio lecture. There you go. I think that's a pretty good one. Okay.
I'm gonna push it.
Awesome. Alright, thank you. Okay.
That's the best I can do it.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Alrighty, so we're gonna continue down the line here. So we're gonna develop hypothesis and predictions for changes in photosynthetic rates at different light levels. Okay.
She's talking about the dark versus light, like when we were putting the finished leaves.
Yeah, when we're doing that. Like, oh, you put it under somewhere like in this dark shade, compared to like, you know, over the lab, like table, yeah. So I guess you can say. In this situation, if. The, let me put in this sub step. See, okay, so if. The leaves, I guess, are. In open sunlight. As a prediction there, so then the photosynthetic rate would be higher.
Correct.
Would be higher. And then if the leaves. Are covered in a shade. Then the photosynthetic rate would be lower. There. Alright, so those are the predictions down. I'll develop a hypothesis, someone to this. Yeah, true. Then the sali- saliary respiration rate.
I nearly forgot.
Yeah, same, it happens.
Yeah, because I was trying to like type that and forgot what I was typing.
It's all good, it's all good. Alrighty.
Isn't it just a duplicate of the one you just did?
Pretty much, yeah, for the hypothesis, same as prediction. Oh, yeah, this is the same, I think, as the one that was up here. Oh, sorry, I mean, Christina, I deleted it, the one above. In the in the germination, because it was a dupe. It was also part of allocation.
So do we keep this one?
Yeah, we'll keep this one here, because I deleted the one above, because it was the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, cool, cool. Or actually, I think you're right. What the heck? Yeah, yeah, this predictions, yeah. It is the same thing. Yeah, you're right, Christina. Let me do that, see above.
As for the next one, it's saying identify external parts of the leaf, so.
Like, you remember our, our, our lab checks? We had like, oh, identify this, even in the quiz, like, oh, identify pit, identify.
Can I put a picture under it?
Yeah, just do a picture. Sounds good, sounds good.
You can take care of the next one while I look for it.
Alright, works for me. Okay, so locate and identify the cells and tissues of a leaf. That's also like a picture type of thing here. I'm gonna go find an image. Let's see.
Sorry.
Oh, no worries. Yeah, we'll just, it's all good. Alright, I think this is a good one right here. Yeah, this is a pretty good. Okay, I'll do the next one. Relate differences, the leaf structure to environmental differences.
I think she's talking about the xerofy and the mesophyte hydrophyte.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
We might need to be able to like distinguish what she gives us the microscope images.
Yeah, you're probably right there. Let me do the definition there, let's see.
I'll just go get some images.
Sounds good. No rush. So xerofy, mesophyte, hydrophyte? Those are the three, I think.
Yeah, the main three.
Main three, awesome.
She's expected us to know all those.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, so hydrophyte, okay, the prefix is hydro, so what has to deal with water? So plant. Rose in. Or on water. Alright, so mesophytes. This contains. Highly developed branched roots. And then xerofy is pretty much the opposite of hydro. So a plant that needs very little water. I'll put some examples. So it's like cactus. Hydrophyte, like a lily pad. I guess, water lily.
I'm gonna insert the picture.
Yeah, that's fine. Alright, I'm gonna post xerofy. It's kinda cut off and kinda blurry. Let me see if I can. Let's see if I can get another one. It's kinda, kinda blurry. I think this is better. Alright, we're making a really good time. That's, that's good.
Would you like the one where like it has like labels on it?
Yeah, that would actually help. Yeah, I was trying to find one. It was kinda. Kinda blurry. Let's see.
I got it.
Alright, thank you.
Copy. And that's it.
Yeah, that looks good. Alright, awesome, awesome. Okay, now we're coming down to the last two sections. Alright, allocation. So describe phenotypic plasticity. Alright, let me find a definition. This is pretty much the appearance, let's see.
I'll take care of the next bullet point.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Let's see. Alrighty, that's good. Then in terms of root to shoot. Yeah, that's good. That's a good one, so we, let's see.
While I'm at it, I guess I can do the next one, because it's following up on that.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Good work, good work. Alrighty. Let me check, let me see this one. Predict how allocation patterns change among plant species, drawing differing, okay. This is similar to the, this one above with the different seeds. Okay. So something like different weather conditions, like cold, hot. Let me see. Yeah. More allocation.
I think I'm good.
Yeah, that looks good there. High nutrient and low nutrient treatments. Yeah, that checks out. Alright, so checking this out. This looks pretty good overall. Let's see.
When I add a picture to the bottom.
Compare them on, yeah. Let me find some cell and tissues for the primary root. Let's see. Okay, I think I found something good for primary growth. Let's see. Let me just make this bigger. Come on, why so blurred? Let me see. Okay, I got a better, better image. Let's see. Yeah, I think that's a bit better. Let me. No. Yeah, I think that that's the best I can do right now. Let's see. Okay, that looks good. Alright, awesome, awesome. Alright, let me see this last section here. It's to demonstrate the action of plant hormones. So is it like what? Why each thing, each hormone does?
Yeah, I think so.
Oxin, jabrelin, cetacanin. So what he's doing over here. Let's see, alrighty. Let me look at it. But yeah, I think this is good. But yeah, I think this is good. Not bad for one hour. Yeah, most of this, most of the concepts down. Let's see. Oxon, Alan, I think. I think A B C acid, I think that's the fourth one. Okay, I think I remember this from the video, the YouTube video. Let me see, check this out. I think it's about right. I think that's all of them pretty much. Let me see. Yes, he dormancy. Of these hormone briefly, first off. Leave sense and obsession. Then we have cytokine in home, which regulates the cell design and shoot formation in the plant. Think leaves. Let me see if I'm typing right. The senescence and obsession. Okay, I think that's all of it, guys. I, I think we're good. Yeah, checks out.
I think we covered it all already.
Yeah, I agree.
I went over the notes that she posted too.
Awesome, yeah, that's really good. But yeah, other than that, I think we're good. Let me stop the share and the recording. We'll get this uploaded here.